Finance Committee meeting for Monday, October 25th to order. First item I have on tonight's agenda is Resolution 127-21. That's a resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement for inspection services for the Wiley Road Waterloo project and also to improve my favorite then announced certificates for invoices received in October and November. This is coming through water water pollution. Mr. James?
Thank you, Chairman Stoudemire. Stoudemire?
Whatever.
He's been called worse.
I've been calling him that.
Probably today already, but that's okay.
But soon.
I avoided using some other terms. I would like to give a little bit of time to Stephen Wellstad to discuss this little food. We are simultaneously proceeding with this particular Waterloo project to help get us across or under, I should say, the 33 bypass. Stephen?
Yeah, thank you, Councilman. Good evening, everybody. So we've been here, I've been here various times previously about this project. As noted, this will involve the jack and bore of the water line underneath US 33 to connect the two lines we have on Magna Avenue and Rule Park Avenue to create a looped feed there for the users on Wiley Road. The project has been bid. We actually got relatively good costs, I think, given the current market with everything. And we did have a pre-construction meeting last week. The contractor is still, things are kind of in flux in terms of the schedule. We don't know exactly when it'll get started, but we do expect it to get started here within the next month or two. All of the material, the water line we ordered previously will be delivered early in December. And again, the contractor, we're expecting to begin before the end of this year. And this legislation will just be, allow us to enter into a contract for inspection services so we have a guy on our field, in the field for us, making sure everything goes okay and is built as we need it to. If there are any of the questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Any other questions? You're okay? Sorry.
If you get started in December, when do you, how long do you think it's going to take?
We, I think we're expecting into the spring, early summer. Of course, with winter conditions, it's not as easy to construct and you don't have as much productivity. But the good news is that it's just completely open field right now, open right-of-way. There aren't any other really utilities, roadways to deal with, traffic, that sort of stuff. So it's promising from that perspective. But yeah, I'd say early, early part of next year.
Okay, thank you.
Yep.
Chair?
I might add that this is a project that you got an email about the other day that we recently were notified that we got a grant for the full amount, that we applied for $950,000 for this project. And we will have a groundbreaking on Wednesday morning at 10:30 for those of you who would like to attend.
Yes, sir.
Stephen, you might tell them also who the chosen contractor is.
Chosen contractors, M. Campbell. They are out of Stowe, Ohio, which is up near, I believe, Akron in that area. They've, I think, bid on some recent projects and, but this was the first one they've been successful with, successful on here recently. So yeah, I think we're all looking forward to working together and they seem eager and excited about it.
All right, what's your pleasure?
We are going to go two readings on that and Mr. Hall on this.
All right, so two readings on 127 and Mr. Hall as the second. Thank you, sir. We appreciate it.
Thank you, everybody.
Next item I have is Temporary Resolution 128-21. That's a resolution to increase, decrease appropriations in the Parks and Recreation Fund 2012. That's coming through Service, Mrs. Teener.
Yes, and I'll have...
So Mike was not able to be there. Actually, I told him not to be here because he had not feeling well. So anytime I'm poor, he doesn't feel well. He was, I restricted him from being here. Let me just say that. You're important. I don't want to get you ill, but if you look at the Resolution 128-21, is that it? 128?
128-21.
So Mike, the Parks Department and the Parks Board voted to move this to you. They are taking some funds with our salaries and staff pools and things like that, extra money. They're placing them in some of our contractual service line items, as you can see, all those 52034 line items, different funds there. And these are just to be able to finish the year out. Some of these include different positions. Some of them are in education, some of them are in referees, some of them are actually on cleaning, some of the cleaning protocols that we follow. We might not use all this money, but they just want to make sure they have enough funds to finish out the year for that. Questions for Mr. Martin on this? Remember, anything that's unspent just falls into the Parks carryover. So what's your pleasure?
We'll suspend on it tonight. Mr. Matlin will be my second.
All right, so we will suspend with Mr. Matlin as the second on 128-21. Thank you.
Question?
Yes, ma'am.
I think we need to change the date on there. It says 2012 in Section 1.
No, that's the Parks and Recreation Fund.
Is that right? The 20, is, oh, you're, I'm sorry. That, I'm sorry.
Yeah.
I'm sorry. I'm wrong.
You retract that remark.
I retract that remark.
All right. Well, yeah.
That's a good point.
Awesome. Moving on. Next item I have is Resolution 129-21. That's a resolution to accept and appropriate the fiscal year 21 funds for the CBBG program. This is coming through Economic Development. Mr. McDaniel?
I think you pretty much just summed it up on your quick entry there, but yeah, this is to accept and appropriate the $511,607 into the CBGG program and to allow us to expend those funds. Reminder, this was previously approved by Permanent Resolution 76-21 and we had public hearings on these expenditures.
I think it's also fair to note, we probably have a half a dozen pieces of legislation that preceded this one.
Absolutely.
To ultimately spend this money, so.
So with that said, we would like to suspend.
All right, so we're looking for suspension with...
Mrs. Kreitz.
Kreitz is the second. To actually take in the money and appropriate it for the, all the projects that have been basically discussed around this table ad nauseam. So we will suspend on 129-21. Thank you, sir. Next item I have is Resolution 130-21. That's a resolution to increase receipts in the Community Development Chip Home Program Fund 2083. Mr. McDaniel, again, coming through Economic Development.
Yes, our 21, our 2021 budget did not include anticipated revenue from the chip deferred loan payoffs that we had this year. We would like to have that money allocated and make the funds available for 2021 expenses in our Community Housing Improvement Program.
Questions for Mr. McDaniel or others? Seeing none, what's your timing?
I would also request suspension so we can utilize these funds as quickly as possible. And you would be my second, please.
That's like a deal. So we are going to suspend on 130-21. I will be the second on that. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Are there any discussion items tonight? I'm sorry, are there any departmental updates this evening for council?
I have a couple of updates just to kind of keep you guys in the loop on what's happening with the sidewalk program that's been recently put out there. So we've committed approximately $40,000 of the $100,000 that was committed to that. So 40% of that's been committed. I want to kind of maybe get some feedback. I know I've spoke with maybe just a couple of you one-on-one, but you know, a lot of the residents are concerned like, okay, how long is the program going to last? Will it go to the next year? And we've assured them that yes, we feel like this is a program that's going to continue on. I would, I would anticipate probably asking for those committed funds to roll over into the budget for next year. Plus, I have an idea of maybe $150,000 that would be thrown into that fund as well to continue on for the year 2022. That would be put into the budget process, but that's just a little bit of an update on the sidewalk program and where it is today. Right now, we're having problems getting contractors, finding people to do the work or the residents are having a hard time finding people to do the work. We probably will have a couple of those that will get expended this year, but we're anticipating that it'll roll into next year for most of that work and reimbursement, so.
So can we go ahead and tackle this first with council real quick?
Sure.
So the fact that you're having a hard time finding contractors already, I suspect that will probably be, that will continue through 2022. But I want to get the feeling from council, I know it's an initiative that the mayor put out sidewalks was a very important issue as part of the income tax levy that passed. Council, he's asking for 150 plus the carryover of whatever's remaining this year potentially to spend next year. I personally have a problem with that and I honestly think you have a hard time getting contractors to consume all that money as well. But I want to get the feeling around council, if anyone, you know, pro con or have a thought about that. Yeah, go ahead.
What you said, I'm okay with moving forward with it.
Okay.
Because it's been a long time.
Yeah, for sure. For sure. We've been talking about, even Randy talked about it, you know, Mr. Groff when he was here.
Before I was even on.
Yeah, we were trying to, we were trying to get everyone else have any thoughts or comments? Mr. James?
In some of the campaigning that I've been doing, it's not in a lot of the areas where the sidewalks are needed, but in those areas, people were really pretty excited about it.
That's good. Mrs. Bobbitt, did you have a thought?
I think it's wonderful. When you're out there walking and you see the shape that the sidewalks are in, this is only going to be, you know, beautify the city. It's needed.
All right, Mr. Matlin, you had your hand halfway up so you get to talk now.
Yeah, I'm all for it. It'd just be, if we had the money, which I think we will have for next year, I don't know anything about the budget for next year, I'd assume it would. Is there any way we can get a couple addresses that get, when they get done, just we can drive by and...
Well, one that recently just was done and actually will get paid out here, and this is the second thing I want to talk to everyone about is just kind of some areas right there in front of Bay's Food Market that was just redone. So those areas are being measured up and we've come, you know, obviously we saw it when it was being done and kind of reached out to the person that was doing it and that kind of happened fairly quickly. And that's the second problem we're having is just, just getting the word out. There are still people that just don't know that this program exists. I know the mayor has made several Facebook posts, you know, you know, the Eagles that just, you know, how do you get that out there and make people aware? It's going to take time for that word to travel and hit everyone out there that really, you know, wants to participate in that program. So still trying to get the word out.
All right, let me go to other council and then I'll circle back to you, Becky. Anyone else have any thoughts over there at the at-larges?
I like it.
Okay, good.
My thought is, oh, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. You already started. Go ahead.
So I know with, when we do the CBBG thing, we have pamphlets and things that are made up that we can take to people. Is there anything we have that we could print out something and maybe, because I've gone door-to-door with things before, like when you had the TNR program years ago and give it to people? I mean, can we have, do something like that maybe?
Yeah, we can, I mean, there's, obviously we have the stuff on the website. It's under like an engineering.
Right, I know, not everybody.
We can print that off or, you know, create something, I guess, to have as a, I don't know, a snippet of information of what that looks like. We haven't quite gotten to the point where, working with Linda's office to try to find maybe some of those folks that can't come up with the other funds or the, you know, the 50% or whatever, or if it's not, maybe the dollar figure isn't covering the amount that they can afford. We're still trying to tie those things together and make that fit for some of those folks, but we just, we're connecting the dots on that.
President Oo.
Thank you, Mr. Stoudemire. I guess I just, to extend Ms. Teener's thoughts, if you had something that could be printed out, is it something we could drop in utility bills and send around to the entire city? I know we've done that in the past for certain things that were connected to utilities. I don't know if we'll do that for just anything, but.
Yes, we, that would qualify for us to do that. There is a cost to it, so we'll have to work out. We'll see what's scheduled to be in that. That's very, very helpful sometimes.
Okay. Any further thoughts? Mrs. Bobbitt, closing thought?
Sorry. So for our viewing public, you mentioned the website and I know in our other meetings we talked about what they needed to do, how they needed to apply. So the first thing they needed to do is to go to the website or call you on the telephone, right?
That's correct.
And then also the same for contractors that maybe might not be a contractor registered here in Lancaster. They need to give you or the building department a telephone call.
Yep, you got to get registered. That's correct. Yep.
Okay, thank you.
All right, so topic one checked off the list. Topic two.
Topic two. I just want, this is a short little thing I feel is important, but we hired Adam Holcomb. You guys don't see him, you don't know, probably he worked at the city, but he's in my office. He was hired in as an engineering technician three. He does a lot of CAD work, you know, just is coming along as a young engineer. He actually got his degree down at OU. He just recently passed his EI test, which used to be called Engineer in Training. That's your first test that you pass to become a PE. So he passed that first test. It's an eight-hour test and that's exciting and I think that should be celebrated because it's, these are tough tests. This is very difficult. So he has four years underneath a engineer as kind of the engineer in training type thing to, you know, learn more, probably not from me, more from Kurt, but you know, regardless, he's studying to be a professional engineer and so his next test would be four years later. So that's kind of just an exciting news in our department. Little bit on, we're starting, you guys passed some legislation here recently with minor subdivisions and accepting right-of-way. And this is the little piece where we're trying to take right-of-way during these little minor splits. And what I didn't cover, I think, originally was, these are going to, these are going to be like little, small pieces of slivers of, you know, land and they're going to come through. What I guess, what I'm requesting is that they're probably, they're fairly simple. It's just going to be accepting right-of-way. I'm going to ask for just one reading for each one of those because it's something that needs to move fairly quickly with someone buying an acreage tract out on whatever, Bovin Road or something like that. And it's just going to, they're going to happen quickly. So I'm going to be requesting all of those just to be real quick and get recorded and it moves on, so.
Well, questions on that topic for anybody? All right, you don't have a fourth?
I'm done.
We'll give, by all means, give Adam, congratulations. That's an awesome deal.
Yep.
Thanks for sharing that information. Further updates? Law Director Ollm?
I would just let you all know that we had a new attorney start in our office today. So at the next meeting, I will bring him here for introductions as well as a piece of legislation.
Do we have a name so I can put it in the minutes?
His name is John Eli Young, goes by Eli. James, sorry, James Eli. It's first day, come on. If I let him think that I knew him on the first day, that would be, you know, it's too much. James, he goes by Eli.
All right. He was probably there well before you and I think you crossed paths as you came in at, what, 3:30 and?
4:30.
Other departmental updates? Seeing none, I will now defer to President Oo for tonight's meeting prep.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Can you turn the microphone on? There we go. We do have one other piece of legislation tonight to work our way through, Temporary Ordinance 38-21 and ordinance to accept the final plat for Timbertop Phase 2 coming through code enforcement and zoning. Mr. Matlin?
Yes, I think Stephen Wellstad sent something out or Mitch Nolan's been talking about. He sent an email out explaining that this is merely the Lemon Group sold the Timbertop house and buildings and the five acres of land plus from mine, it's a little more than five acres.
Little bit more.
And what this is doing is splitting that off. They call it a phase, but really in the legislation, there's no new roadways, no new sewer. It sets up some easements, but that's all it does. And they're going to, we're going to probably be asking for suspension merely so they can get the property closed on and get it done.
Yeah. And I believe John Hartman with Lemon Development's going to be here tonight for council and so he'll, he'll speak to that tonight a little bit or request that. They do have a buyer for the house. We did review it. It went through Planning Commission. Our office has reviewed the final plat. It's essentially what, a lot split, but since it's part of the subdivision, we're requiring them to go through the major subdivision regulations. There are no, like Jack had mentioned, that it doesn't have any public improvements. So there's no bonding requirements or anything like that. There are some easements that need to be set up for future phases and whatnot, so yeah. And that was, I believe they want to close November, I don't know, November 2nd or something. I don't know.
Very good. Questions for, yes?
Such a question as a comment. Since that has been somewhat of a controversial issue in the Second Ward, I discussed that with the Second Ward Councilman. And we had the chance to walk the entire facility up there last week on Tuesday. And a lot of the concerns of the people that have land abiding that and certainly as we went through this whole process of the objections and things, many of the people thought that it had already been torn down. And my response to them was, it's not been torn down. At that time, I did not know it had been sold. But indeed, it has been preserved, it's going to be occupied again, and it's not going to be destroyed. So all of the concerns that a lot of people had, the scientific issues on the welfare or the living of that particular property, none of the development had committed to tear it down and they've now lived up to that commitment to see what they do to get it sold. End of story.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. James. Further discussion, yes, Mr. Hall?
Is this going to be a private residence again?
I believe that's right.
That's awesome.
Other questions for the engineer? All right, thank you, Mr. Nolan. We'll have him speak during voter and taxpayer if he comes, if he's able to get here. We appreciate, appreciate that. Very good. Other, anything else on this? What's your pleasure then, Mr. James?
I'll try and stay.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is yours. Mr. Matlin, I apologize.
I'll be my second, if that's all right. I'll try to last call.
Very good. So suspension tonight on Temporary Ordinance 38-21 with Mr. Schoonover as the second. All right, with that, I will send it back to the chairman.
Any other items for finance? Looking and seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn?
I make a motion, we adjourn.
We have a second. We are adjourned, Mr. President.
Thank you very much. The regular meeting of Lancaster City Council will begin at 6:30.
That's why estate planning is important. Estate planning provides you comfort and peace of mind knowing that you're taking care of your loved ones and ensuring your legacy lives on just as you envisioned. You lived a life that is beautifully and uniquely yours. You deserve an estate planning attorney who understands that and creates a plan as unique as you and in the best interest of your loved ones. You deserve the local, trusted, experienced attorneys at Dagger Law.
There is no place like Lancaster, Ohio and Fairfield County, and like you, I am proud to call them home. As a longtime resident of Lancaster and graduate of Lancaster High School, this community is important to me and I want to provide superior customer service, professionalism, integrity and honesty at the Connor Insurance Agency. I am committed to supporting local programs and projects through my volunteer work and board membership with several organizations. It has been a great honor to work with all the first responders throughout Lancaster, Fairfield County and the state of Ohio to put on Kids and Cops Day, to be a part of Shop With A Cop alongside Lancaster Police Department and JFS, and to help Lancaster Public Education Foundation raise funds to support our local public schools and teachers. These men and women work hard to protect and support our community and I would like to take this moment to say thank you for all they do. My goal as a business owner and insurance agent is to provide my clients with the most appropriate services and coverage for their needs at a competitive rate. As an independent agent, I have several carriers to choose from so I can customize your insurance coverage to fit your needs and desires. I strive to make sure there are no gaps in your coverage that could be harmful and just as important that you are not overinsured. I look forward to serving your insurance needs now and in the future. At Connor Insurance, we are here to serve you by protecting what is important to you. Please contact my office at 740-654-2848 for a full list of services and carriers or visit my website, connorinsuranceagency.com.
The Frankie Smith Funeral Home and Crematory in Lancaster and the Johnson Smith Funeral Home in Baltimore have a long and wonderful history of serving our community. Feel free to give us a call at 740-653-0652. Stop in and see us at either of our two locations, 405 North Columbus Street in Lancaster and 207 South Main Street in Baltimore. Respect for tradition, regard for change.
Good evening. Welcome to Lancaster City Council. Please show me a word of prayer. Father, we are thankful for this day and your many blessings, thankful for how you continue to lead and guide us. We pray that you would be with us tonight, Lord, and all that is set before us. May we rightly represent those who have put us in these positions. May we do what is in the best interest of the citizens of Lancaster, and we'll continue to give your son glory in Jesus' name. Amen. Amen. I hereby call this meeting of Lancaster City Council to order. Please join me in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Here.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Here.
Mr. Hall?
Here.
Mr. James?
Here.
Mr. Matlin?
Here.
Mr. McDaniel?
Here.
Mr. Schoonover?
Here.
Mr. Stoughton?
Here.
And Mrs. Teener?
Here.
Let the record reflect that all nine members of Lancaster City Council are in attendance this evening. Reading and disposing of the journal.
I'd like to present the regular meeting minutes dated October the 11th, 2021.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the journal.
Second?
A motion and a second to receive and file the journal. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of city officials?
There are two. Email dated October 20th, 2021 regarding Transit Director posting submitted by Service Safety Director Paul Martin, and an email dated October 25th, 2021 regarding finance agenda submitted by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of city officials.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to receive and file reports of city officials. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there communications?
There are three. Notice to the legislative authority of a transfer of a liquor license from Sherry Umaya Gas Inc. doing business as Edie Road Shell located at 2610 North Columbus Street to Parmar Oil Company doing business as Parmar Oil located at 2610 North Columbus Street, Lancaster, Ohio submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. Notice to legislative authority of a stock liquor license change. Our Fairview Inn to Inc. doing business as Fairview Inn located at 176 East Fair Avenue, first floor and patio, Lancaster, Ohio submitted by the Ohio Division of Liquor Control. And finally, a letter dated October 6th, 2021 regarding construction notice submitted by Maggie Beggs, Project Outreach Specialist, AEP.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file communications.
Second?
Motion and a second to receive and file communications. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have a special presentation tonight, and Ms. Disser, I'll ask you to come as well as Councilwoman Kreitz to the podium to make that presentation this evening.
Good evening. It's our pleasure every year, we just started last year, to recognize some special citizens in Lancaster with a Caring Citizens Award. And so pleased that Councilwoman Kreitz has nominated her nominee, and I'm gonna ask Amanda Everett to come up. Amanda Everett currently serves as the Executive Director of Destination Downtown Lancaster. Even more important is that Amanda is also an important and dedicated resident of the Fifth Ward. Her passion and love for the Fifth Ward and for the entire city of Lancaster goes beyond her position with DDL, and this is apparent as soon as you meet her. All anyone needs to do is speak with Amanda about anything Lancaster, and her face immediately lights up and the passion exudes from every word. Amanda is more than just excited about this city. She has been instrumental in the continued improvement and revitalization of the downtown Lancaster area. She is involved in developing new ideas for improvement and enhanced amenities, and she shares these ideas with city officials and citizens on a regular basis. She helps bring these ideas to fruition through partnership with business owners, citizen volunteers, and other members of the community. She has demonstrated this through the various events that our downtown now hosts and the reduced vacancies in our downtown buildings and shops. She not only talks the talk, but she walks the walk. I see her interacting and patronizing businesses during the week, but she can also be found chatting it up with visitors, citizens, and shop proprietors in the we, in the evenings and weekends. Whether it's riding her bike to work each, each weekday morning, strolling the streets while shopping, going to the Saturday morning farmer's market, or helping set up for the next great event that Lancaster is hosting, Amanda can always be seen in and around the downtown shops, restaurants, and parks. It would be difficult to believe that some business owner's interest in attraction and coming to Lancaster hasn't been greatly influenced by Amanda's passion for this city. Her attitude and conduct reflect great, great credit upon herself and on the city of Lancaster. It is with extreme pleasure that I am nominating and presenting this award to Amanda Everett this year. And I would be remiss if I didn't mention it's her birthday as well.
That's right, it is her birthday.
29, 29. Thank you, thank you, everyone.
No, 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 come on, let's have it.
No, that was absolutely beautiful. I appreciate it. I wanna get off here as quickly as possible. I do believe that my husband may have brought my passport because he's a little bit concerned because I'm not actually a citizen of the United States yet, and I told him that, that I'm not giving back this award even though. I am a permanent resident, and I have a green card, and I'll show it to you if you'd like to see it. She doesn't even go here, no. So thank you very, very much, I really appreciate it. I love this town. It's been my hometown for 21 years. I'm raising all of my children here. My children continue to live here, and we, we hope that we, we see our grandchildren living here in the future. So, thank you, everyone. Thank you so much.
Amanda's husband, Brian, is back there as well, and thank you both for being here tonight, and thank you for what you do for the city. You know, I, I count Brian and Amanda close friends. We hang out from time to time, and it's good to have those friends who disagree with you on pretty much everything. And that is Amanda, and, and Brian to some, to some extent too, and it's good because they, you know, they keep you honest, and they, you know, you get to have good discussion. But I love you guys and appreciate you as well. Thank you for all that you do. So congratulations once again. All right, very good. Thank you very much, Ms. Disser, for doing that, and is this sort of like a, I know we did it last year, once-a-year thing or a rolling thing? How do we want to proceed?
Yeah, I like to do it once a year.
So this is it for this year?
So this, well, I would just say that Councilwoman Teener has a couple that she would like to recommend, but they've been under the weather, and so when they are feeling better, we will present their awards. But yeah, I like to do this once a year, and I was a little late this year, but like to get ahead of the game and present it at the same time as the United Wake Community Care Day, right? So it's all part of, as a community, you know, caring for our community and recognizing those who do.
That's great. So September-ish, and we'll have opportunity to make nomination again next year?
Say in, in August. Making the nominations in August, and then doing the presentation and awards in September.
Very good. All right, well, thank you very much. Thanks for putting it together. All right, are there any petitions or memorials?
There are none to be presented.
At this time, we set time aside for the voters and taxpayers of the city of Lancaster to address city council on any item or issue they would like. If you would like to address Lancaster City Council tonight, we invite you to come forward to the podium, sign in with your name and address, and then state the same for the record. Please note that while city council may not, they will not respond to you during this time of the meeting, they may choose to do so at a later time during the session at the end. In addition, we ask that you would contain your comments to five minutes or less in the course with the rules of Lancaster City Council. Is there anyone who would like to address Lancaster City Council tonight? Yes, sir. You can sign in afterward, you can go ahead and just state your name and address for the record and forge ahead.
Hi, my name is John Hartman. I work for Lemon Development. My address, where I live? I'm in 1481 Westminster Drive in Columbus, Ohio. So I'm here to, the first reading for the plat for the Timbertop Mansion that's up there. I was gonna, I'm asking the council to consider waiving the second and third reading. I think two reasons why, I mean, there's no public improvements to the parcel itself, but the main reason is we have a buyer, we're in contract for the house, and they're gonna close on November 1st on their house, and they want to close right after, right after that on our house. So, so that's the, the real reason we'd like to, to try to get this thing passed in the first reading, so. So it's a good thing, I mean, it's a family of, I think, four or five kids, and they, they're local to Lancaster, so we're, we're happy that it's in contract, so.
Very good. Thank you very much for being here. Appreciate it, sir.
Sign in.
Is there anyone, yes, please sign in. Is there anyone else you'd like to address Lancaster City Council this evening? All right, we will move ahead then, and thank each of you for being here this evening. Are there reports of standing committees?
There are three. The Finance Committee meeting dated October the 25th, 2021 submitted by Mr. Stoughton. Safety Committee meeting dated March 5th, 2021, and September 3rd, 2021 submitted by Mrs. Bobbitt, and the Water Water Pollution Control dated October 13th, 2021 submitted by Mr. James.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion to receive and file the reports of standing committees.
Second?
A motion and a second to receive and file reports of standing committees. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Are there reports of special committees?
There are none to be presented.
We have no public hearings this evening, so we'll move to the reading of resolutions, beginning with the third reading of temporary resolution 114-21.
Star.
Star.
A resolution scheduling Lancaster City Council meetings for 2022 offered by Mr. Hall and seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record ordinance temporarily numbered 114-21 star.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 114-21 star. Discussion, Mr. Hall?
Yes, Mr. President, this is really pretty straightforward. Every year, we set the calendar for the, for the upcoming year in terms of council meetings, and this is what this motion does.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 114-21 star passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 118-21.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Lawrence Street Central Fuel Depot relocation offered by Mr. Schoonover, seconded by Mr. James.
Mr. Schoonover?
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 118-21.
I will second that motion? We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 118-21. Mr. Schoonover?
This is just allowing the Safety Director to go out to bid. We're looking at relocating the current City Fuel Depot, so this is just the first step in making that happen.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 118-21 passes nine to zero. We're to have a second reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with temporary resolution 121-21.
A resolution to authorize the Service Safety Director to enter into an engineering agreement for the Upper Hocking Water Pollution Control Expansion Project Design Construction Administrator, Administration, excuse me, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James?
This is the second and third reading.
Second and three readings on temporary resolution 121-21. Temporary resolution 122-21.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to advertise for bids for the Upper Hocking Water Pollution Control Facility Phase 2 Expansion Project offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mrs. Teener.
Mr. James?
Thank you, Mr. President. At this time, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution number 122-21.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 122-21. Discussion, Mr. James?
I'll save it, thank you.
Okay, discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would now like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution number 122-21.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record temporary resolution 122-21. Discussion, Mr. James?
Briefly, actually, the previous resolution and this one are somewhat tied together. We have to allow the cert, city, city service director to go out and advertise for bids in order for us to be ready to start issuing some of those contracts for the upgrade of the Upper Hocking Water Pollution Control facility. So, that's all I have to say.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary resolution 122-21 passes nine to zero. Temporary resolution 124-21.
A resolution to decrease and increase appropriations to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the county auditor and the general fund 1001 offered by Mr. Stoughton and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. Stoughton?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of resolution temporary 124-21, please.
Second?
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary resolution 124-21. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. We, the Lancaster Police Supervisors Union and the city recently negotiated a settlement via FactFinder. This is a way to move the money around to increase the appropriate accounts for that fact-finding result. And then second to that, there is appropriating other monies for, you know, the police department in hopes that we can hire more, more officers by the end of the year.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Resolution Temporary 124-21, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 124-21. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Nothing further, please.
Discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 124-21 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 126-21.
A resolution to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate with the County Auditor and the Waste Water Fund 6004, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James.
126-21.
Correct.
At this time, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council waive its rules and suspend its rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution Number 126-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Resolution 126-21. Discussion, Mr. James?
I'll save it, thank you.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. James?
Thank you, Mr. President. Now, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution Number 126-21.
Second.
A motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 126-21. Discussion, Mr. James?
Briefly, as a reminder, we're actually paying off one of the bonds that we had in the amount of about $2.2 million at a higher interest rate and freeing up a lot of that money then for debt service, et cetera. So, at this time, once again, that's all I have to add for that.
Thank you very much, Mr. James. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 126-21 passes nine to zero. We now have first reading on a series of resolutions, beginning with Temporary Resolution 127-21.
A resolution authorizing the Service Safety Director to enter into an agreement for inspection services for the Wiley Road Water Loop Project and to approve the issuance of a then-and-now certificate for any invoices related to the contract for the month of October and November 2021, offered by Mr. James and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. James.
As we briefly discussed in the Finance Committee meeting, this is in the amount of about $100,000 for these inspection services for that line to be actually placed underneath the bypass out to the Wiley Road Loop Project. And this will be the first of two readings.
First two readings on Temporary Resolution 127-21. Temporary Resolution 128-21.
A resolution to decrease and increase appropriations to appropriate from the unencumbered balance and to amend the certificate of appropriations with the County Auditor and the Park and Recreation Fund 2012, offered by Mrs. Teener, seconded by Mr. Matlin.
Ms. Teener.
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 128-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 128-21. Discussion, Ms. Teener?
I'll wait.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Ms. Teener?
Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 128-21.
There it is. A motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 128-21. Ms. Teener?
Yes, since the pools are now closed, the parks are hiring people for cleaning, recreation and other things, possibly, I guess, officials, things for games and that. So, we're just kind of decreasing the pool fund and increasing for hiring contractual people.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 128-21 passes nine to zero. Temporary Resolution 129-21.
A resolution to accept inappropriate funds FY 2021, City of Lancaster Community Development Block Grant Program, offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary Number 129-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 129-21. Discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
I'll wait.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon its written record, Resolution Temporary Number 129-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 129-21. Discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, real quick, the city received notice from the federal government that we received $511,607 for our Community Development Block Grant Program. We previously held public hearings as to where we would expend this money and created a plan for 2021. This will allow us to accept the money, appropriate the money and expend the money.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Epstein.
Oops, wasn't expecting that. And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 129-21 passes eight to zero with a one abstention. Temporary Resolution 130-21.
A resolution to increase receipts appropriate from the unencumbered balance and amend the certificate with the County Auditor and the Community Development Chip Home Program Fund 2083, offered by Mr. McDaniel and seconded by Mr. Stoughton.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second and third reading of Resolution Temporary Number 130-21.
Second.
A motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the second and third reading of Temporary Resolution 130-21. Discussion, Mr. McDaniel?
Not at this time.
Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, Mr. President, I would like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon its written record, Resolution Temporary Number 130-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Resolution 130-21. Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, this is money that we did not budget for 2021 that came from the chip deferred loan payoffs. We'd like to reallocate that money to make it available for 2021 expenses and this is our community housing improvement program.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. McDaniel. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary Resolution 130-21 passes nine to zero. Are there any further resolutions to come before Lancaster City Council this evening? If not, we'll move on to the reading of ordinances, beginning with third reading of Temporary Ordinance 34-21.
An ordinance approving and adopting an addendum to the Historic Lancaster Commission Design Guidelines for the purpose of establishing rules and guidelines for mural artwork within the Lancaster Historic District and declaring an emergency, offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second reading of, or the third reading of Temporary Ordinance 35-21.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of Temporary Ordinance 35-21.
Thirty-four.
I'm sorry, I'm reading wrong here. Thirty-four, twenty-one, so.
Very good. Second. We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, Temporary Ordinance 34-21. Discussion, Mr. Matlin?
This, it changes for the Board of Zoning Appeals, gives them ability to have an executive session. It was a omission, I think, when it was first written, that meant that everything they did had to be in line. So, it just changes one word within the code.
Yeah. And to clarify, allows them to deliberate, but then they have to come back out to have, to take action, just like we would have to. Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz? Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance thirty-four dash twenty-one passes nine to zero. We now have second reading on temporary ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-one.
An ordinance approving and adopting an addendum to the Historic Lancaster Commission Design Guidelines for the purpose of establishing rules and guidelines for mural artwork within the Lancaster Historic District and declaring an emergency, offered by Mr. Schoonover and seconded by Mr. Hall.
Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the second reading of temp, or the, the third reading of temporary ordinance thirty-five twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover? Not at this time. Discussion on the motion to suspend. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Motion to suspend carries nine to zero. Mr. Schoonover.
Mr. President, I'd like to make a motion that council pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance thirty-five twenty-one.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to pass and gross and enter upon the written record, temporary ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. Schoonover?
Um, this is, this piece is for the Historic Lancaster Commission. There's a, a lot of increased interest in murals and, in and around downtown and, kind of, it lets them establish. They never really had true guidelines establish them, you know, what, what they would allow, what they wouldn't. So, this kind of puts some rules in place that are black and white for them.
Very good. Further discussion on the motion to pass. Please call the roll.
Mrs. Bobbitt?
Yes.
Mrs. Kreitz?
Yes.
Mr. Hall?
Yes.
Mr. James?
Yes.
Mr. Matlin?
Yes.
Mr. McDaniel?
Yes.
Mr. Schoonover?
Yes.
Mr. Stoughton?
Yes.
And Mrs. Teener?
Yes.
Temporary ordinance thirty-five dash twenty-one passes nine to zero. Temporary ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-one.
An ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of revenue notes in the aggregate principal amount of nine hundred thirty-one thousand, two hundred, two dollars and fifty-one cents to pay cost of improving Edie Road, Memorial Drive, and Michael's Way by grading, widening, paving, curbing, and improving bridges and railroad crossings, relocating utilities, and installing sidewalks, traffic signals and signs, and water, sanitary and stormwater lines and facilities, together with all necessary pertinences thereto and declaring an emergency, offered by Mr. Stoughton and seconded by Mrs. Kreitz.
Mr. Stoughton.
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to make a motion that council suspend its rules and waive the third reading of ordinance temporary thirty-six twenty-one, please.
Second.
We have a motion and a second to suspend the rules and waive the third reading of temporary ordinance thirty-six dash twenty-one. Discussion, Mr. Stoughton?
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. These, this ordinance and the following ordinance are the TIF ordinance, which is tax incremental financing used for the Edie Road Project. And then the next ordinance, thirty-seven, is the financing of that remaining debt on that, uh, TIF property out there on Edie Road. Um, so we're asking for suspension on both.